All right, we'll now call the City Council Regular Meeting to order for September 9th. Please rise if you have a invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation was given by Councilwoman Brittany McGuire.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for everybody who's come out tonight, Lord, to hear about the business of the city. And, Lord, I'm asking you to give us wisdom tonight as we go through each one of these decisions. Help us to be able to see the truth and the light and what you would have us see, Lord, so that we can lead the city as you would have us lead it. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we be seated? You'll please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Councilmember McGuire?
Here.
Councilmember McCure?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Here.
Mayor Anderson?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to remove something from items four through 10?
I'd like to just make a note of a typo correction for the August 26 minutes. We had notated that the score for David Lynch was 140. It should have been 115.40, so I'd like to include that in the motion.
Okay. Anything else? Do we have a motion to approve consent agenda?
I'll make a...
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Just to make a note, does that motion include the correction I mentioned?
It does.
Thank you. Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number 11, this will be the first reading of ordinance number 08-2024. I'm scrolling.
He's 50.
Fifty? Almost there.
All right. Nordest City of Avon Park, Florida, amending the Avon Park Unified Land Development Code specifically amending Article 2, adding section, new section 2.05.04, providing regulations for shipping cargo containers for using, for use as accessory structures for storage, and amending Article 3, Section 3.11.02B10, regarding the use of shipping and cargo containers for storage purposes, and amending Article 9, providing for definition of shipping slash cargo container, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing for an effective date.
All right, do we have someone from CFRPC? Brief us on this?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the Commission. I'm Stephanie Von Polesky-Bush with the Central Florida Regional Planning Council, and tonight we have the... Well, I don't have the clicker. Okay. This one? I'm going in the wrong direction. Okay. Oh, of course. Thank you. Okay, so, as Mr. Bureau mentioned, so tonight we're... The first item is the shipping and cargo containers for accessory uses for storage. And so, all of this is in your packet, and we did discuss it back in, I think, February. But just in case you don't remember, so, and what you're seeing here on the screen in these PowerPoints is just sort of a summary of a lot of the items. Now, I just want to say that at the Planning and Zoning hearing last month, the Planning and Zoning Board did make some change, suggest some changes, which I have added at the end of this, and so, so we can talk about that. So, the proposed amendments, so this does not address cargo containers for non-storage purposes, as in, like, many small houses. And so, there's a new definition, which is a storage container designed and manufactured according to specifications from the ISO as a standard. It's a reusable vessel intended to be loaded on a truck, trailer, railcar, or ship, and used primarily for shipping, storage of goods. Trailers, as defined by this code, do not constitute a shipping or cargo container, and that's important, because we'll get to that in a minute. I'm always hitting the wrong button. Which button is it? I think it died. Did I kill it? Okay, go ahead. All right, so, so the new section, as Mr. Bureau mentioned, is 2.05.04. They shall be limited to C1, C2, C3, C4, I1, and I2, and then the comparable PUD zoning districts. They are prohibited in residential districts except for during construction or loading and unloading. And this provides one container per each 20,000 square feet of lot area, and then there is a provision for location and setback standards, and as to where they can be located on a lot. They must be, the front yard setbacks for the zoning district is a minimum of 7.5 feet from the side and rears, and the, if it's adjacent to residential, then it's 20 feet. In the appearance, the exterior finishes have to match the primary residence. So, these are the, so, other general standards, which is, as I said, just a summary. They may not be used for human or animal occupancy. They cannot obstruct rights of way. They cannot be connected to water or wastewater utilities, but they can have electrical connection. They may not be stacked on top of each other. They must not have graffiti, and they can't store hazardous materials. And then, so, this is the compliance section, and this is something that was discussed at the Planning and Zoning Board meeting. So, Mr. Bureau did a lot of research on this, and so, this is what he came up with along with other staff. So, they have to be removed, if they don't meet the requirements, they have to be removed or remedied within 36 months. If they're not located in a compatible zoning district, or if they exceed the maximum number of containers allowed. They have to be removed or remedied within 180 days if not located in an area where they're prohibited. If they're located in an area where they're prohibited, if the setback requirements are not met, and if it does not meet appearance standards. And then, within 30 days, it has to be removed or remedied where the standards established for temporary use is not met, and/or where general restrictions are met, or not met, sorry. And so, as I said, the Planning and Zoning Board had some comments. The first comment, so, they said that, so in I1, I2, and I, I, C2, I1, and I2 districts, the front yard setbacks are not listed on the table, because there is no setback, and so, that's why, that's why the item, the, the sections were, are the way it is. The way, the reason it is the way it is is because of the setbacks located in the table. That was hard to say, sorry. I hope that made sense. And then, the next one. So, the existing cargo or shipping containers located on property as of the date of the adoption of the ordinance. And so, the Planning and Zoning Board suggested that they should be considered legal non-conforming structures or uses that can remain, continue to remain as long as they come into compliance with the recommended standards and setbacks. And this includes the two locations where they're stacked. Note that the proposed ordinance is drafted to prohibit the stacking of cargo containers. So, the staff response to that is that, in coordination with the city attorney, the staff recommends that Section 2.02.04I, which provides requirements pertaining to compliance and/or the removal of existing shipping or cargo containers, shall remain as presented. So, in other words, to not grandfather the ones in that don't meet the requirements and the stacked ones. Now, that's obviously up to you to decide which way you want to go on that. And then, the third comment was that, about trailers, because I guess there's a couple of places, or maybe three places in town where there's existing trailers. Trailers are not permitted, they're not permitted in town at all. And so, I guess this, I mean, I'm sorry, the suggestion from the Planning and Zoning Board was that they be grandfathered also. But staff recommends for consistency in the enforcement of the proposed rules that they be handled separately from shipping and cargo containers. I mean, if you want to do a whole new rule for trailers, that would be another step. And then, on the next slide, I think, is just, yeah, the motion options. And I can try to answer some questions if you have any. I know that's a lot, there's kind of a lot going on there, because we kind of went around and around, and I, and Jerry probably has some answers also.
Okay, any questions?
I just have one. We had also talked, because I was at the Planning and Zoning meeting as well, about for use during construction. This states only one, but we had had a discussion if it's a really big construction project that sometimes more than one is needed, so they had mentioned doing it the same as the other, where it's one per 20,000 square feet versus just one and only one.
Yeah.
They had mentioned some properties that were, you know, acres big, and then still allowing them one.
Yeah. Any questions, comments on that?
So, that would be for the, just for the temporary, like, during construction and things like that.
So, if you're going to go build a Kmart, you can have more than one if it's bigger than...
Right, or like out there by where coal versus being built, and all them, they've got two or three different ones, but it's because of what they're building.
Right. I don't have a problem with it.
No, I think it has to be allowed. New construction, new projects, I mean, every qualified person out there working uses their own trailer, no matter what it's, the electrical plumbing, whatever, they all need their own parts, so.
And it has to be removed within 30 days of the project being complete anyway.
Hey, Jim, we can't quite hear you over here. Can you talk a little bit in the mic?
You want me to speak up a little bit? I'll be happy to do that. I said I agree.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to that. I know that there's a lot of different workers that come into the different zones, and like Jim said, have different things.
Well, theft is a much larger problem today than it used to be 30 years ago. Anything from staff on that? Any ups, downs, lefts, rights? Okay. All right. The other comment, you mentioned that there was two places that had stacked containers currently, and so, staff...
At least, right? Randy knows.
There's two.
There's two. All right, so I'm assuming the staff was you that wanted it to not be grandfathered as stacked, or?
No, I had no, I had no comments on that.
Well, as the code enforcement guy, how do you feel about that?
Uh, I can tell you that if you remove them, it's going to cause a pretty big inconvenience for both of these rather large businesses that you have in the city that utilize them for the store, for the storage of numerous tires, surplus inventory-type tires.
And you can certainly grandfather those two in. I mean, make an exception for those two that are existing. We're just kind of going by the, what it said, what's been written.
So, I think I would probably share the opinion that anything that currently exists, whether it be stacked or whatever, the only thing, the only caveat to that would be it would need to be legally on their property, and within their property bounds, would be my only thing. If they've got it sitting halfway on somebody else's property, that needs to go regardless, but so long as the, the cargo containers are currently sitting on their property, even if they were double-stacked, you know, as of today, or the setback or whatever, I would say, leave it alone for existing business, and this would be something going forward.
One thing the Planning and Zoning Board brought up was that, the alternative, I mean, at least this is in an organized way. As long as they brought them up to the appearance standards that the city was thinking. So, they were looking at, well, the alternative, if you take that away, what is that going to look like? So, they felt like this was the cleaner of the two options.
You can allow the double stack, but they have to be painted the right color, et cetera?
Right, and no more going forward, but for those two, as far as the double stacking is concerned.
Are they more than double, Randy?
No, I don't know of any that are triple. I just, I know the two, I believe, are double.
They're just double, I believe. It's the same height as their existing building, I want to say.
Correct.
But, I mean, as far as the number of them, too.
Right.
Well, one has six at least, and the other one probably around the same.
And given the size of that building, I would say it's probably bigger than 20,000, but not larger than 40,000, so.
It was the size of the lot, not just the building.
Right, so you have 20,000 square foot lot, you can have one. You have 100,000, you can have five.
So, them having six was what I'm saying, is there's no way there's enough land there to have six.
No.
So, I would certainly be okay with letting them keep what they have, double stacked and the extra number.
And I guess I understand that they're in the back.
They are, both locations are on their property, and actually obscured from view, one of them is the one...
They've also been there for decades.
They've been there for a long time.
Yeah. So, as long as they're brought up to the appearance compliance, meaning the color and/or fencing or vegetation or whatever we had set forth, I don't see a problem with it. Is anybody else?
I don't, that's fine with me.
So, that change, and then was there another change?
Yeah, just in the temporary for the building, is not limiting it just to one, but one per 20,000 square foot, just like the other.
Oh, I see.
Measurements.
I do remember that conversation, because we have, we could have, we have a couple that if we have over 100 acres, and you limit them to just one, that's not reasonable.
Right. And then, one other question, it's not, it doesn't really mean too much, but we're limiting the ones for the building to 20 feet by 10 feet by 10, yet all of the rest of them are 40 feet by 10 by 10. Was there a reason for that, or should we just go 40 and make it the same across the board?
I was under the impression they were all 40. I don't know why you would limit it to 20.
That may have been a mistake on our part.
Twenties are normally like a pod, that you're, a moving pod that you see in people's yards.
Right. I'm in favor of it just being all the same, 40, 10, and 10.
Anyone opposed?
From here out.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Seeing none? The changes are, for the temporary construction, you would have one per 20,000 square feet, not one per property. The length for the construction would be 40 feet, not 20 feet. And then, anything that currently exists today would be grandfathered, i.e. double stacking or the total number, so long as they're brought up to the appearance standards. So, I'll make a motion that we pass it with those changes.
Second.
We have a second. Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Can I add something? I'm sorry. Just so you know, you shouldn't get any calls, but what I'm going to have to do is upon the second reading of this, I'm going to go take either video or actual still photos of every location that has these in existence. So, there is no, if they try to slide another one in, you know, afterwards, and I'm going to need, obviously, access to their property. I don't think I'm going to have any resistance, but that, and then I will keep a, I will keep an internal document stating of what they have with the photos.
Could, could a property owner take pictures themselves and give them to you?
If, you're going on the, as long as they're a righteous thing, but I know if I take them, I know what's on it. But yes, you could.
Okay.
So, then, if, if there's a property here in Avon Park that does not have one, and they want to get one, are they going to have to come, you to fill out a permit? To get a permit, to get permission, or are they going to just split it out?
No, they just can have it per code, as long as they have 20, you know.
If they meet the code requirements.
Yeah, they don't have to have permission from us.
Well, not necessarily permission, but I didn't know if maybe you were going to require them to fill out documents, no.
No, I don't see a reason.
For the construction one, it does say that they have to come fill something out. But if you don't want them to fill something out, then we need to take that out of it.
And then, yeah, because we don't currently have a permit, and as if there's a permit, is there a cost associated with it? Where, I think we should, you know, take that. I don't know that you would need a permit for that. Or, again, you're going on the trust factor like you are with anybody else.
Okay. So, we have a motion that's been passed there, Jerry, and now we want to make another change to it. What's the best way to go about it?
A motion to renew the previous motion, and then just start the motion over.
Okay. So, we need a motion with a vote to renew it, and then start it over?
Yeah.
So, I'll make a motion to renew the previous motion.
Right.
Second.
We have a second. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay.
That'll be motion. Brittany, make a motion with the next change.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance with the said changes. Do I need to state all of the changes?
Again?
But, yes. Well, you don't have to, you don't have to state them all again, just simply say with the same changes, except adding...
With the same changes, and then I will also add that no permit is required.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Council, Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, anything else for the ordinance number 08-2024? Seeing none, moving on to the first reading of ordinance number 09-2024.
It's an ordinance of the City of Avon Park, Florida, amending the Avon Park Unified Land Development Code specifically amending Article 2, adding new section 2.02.18, providing for regulations for farmers' market, and amending Article 9, providing for definition of farmers' market, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing for an effective date.
Okay. Go ahead. When they're ready.
Okay. Next, next one. Go ahead. Okay. So, again, Stephanie Von Polesky-Bush with the Central Florida Regional Planning Council, and this text amendment is regarding farmers' markets. There's a new definition that we're adding, proposing to add in Article 9, which is the sale of locally grown fruits, vegetables, and other agricultural products, including the sale of baked goods, meats, eggs, flowers, and dairy products directly to the consumer by the farmer or an association of local farmers who assemble at a defined location for the purpose of selling their products directly to consumers. And then, the next slide, so, this, again, is sort of just a summary. And farmers' markets do require a special event permit. And then, the application shall include a site plan reflecting layout and location, location of restrooms, waste receptacles, proposed hours of operation, and then, all temporary booths and tents shall be secured to the ground. The site must be cleared of temporary structures and debris within 24 hours of termination of use. Alcohol sales are prohibited, and vendors must display state and health department permits. And on this one, the Planning and Zoning Board had a couple of comments, too. They wanted to remove, they wanted to make a change to the definition to remove organic and non-organic from the proposed new definition. And so, we noted, staff noted that, and then deleted that section, and then just sort of rewrote it to what I read before. So, and then, on the next slide, comment number two. So, they wanted to consider the following provisions to establish that farmers' markets may only be located on properties within the C4 zoning district and on properties where a place of worship is legally established. And then, establish that all farmers' markets shall obtain approval by the city's fire official. And so, we noted that, and then, we added that section in, in Section 2.0218A for applicability. And then, the fire official section is in Section 2.0218J. And then, here are your motion options. So, this one's a little more straightforward.
I have one question, if I may.
Yeah.
On the term locally grown, if somebody decides to sell something like, say, Plant City strawberries, is that allowed or not allowed? It's kind of like...
We don't know.
I mean, you can change that to say Florida-grown, or...
I think that'd be a good idea, Florida-grown, because, I mean, who's going to go out and police that?
Yeah, right, I agree.
Okay. I agree.
So, I have a question on the C4 zone. Is that like 27?
No.
No.
C4 is Main Street.
It's Main Street.
So, that's the only place on Main Street?
No, and, and the churches, any kind of house of worship.
And why is that? Help me out.
That was going to be my question.
I think the, from what I gathered from the discussion with the P&amp;Z was, farmers' markets are more of a local type. You know, you predominantly see them in downtown areas, historic districts. You don't normally see them out on 27, because you have, you have all the regular box stores out there, you have all the supermarkets that sell produce. So, they wanted to be in Main Street, it's, it's more of a, kind of what, from what I've gathered, talking to other people, that's where they want to see them, because there's really going to be only, there's not going to be an abundance of locations that are going to fit where you're going to be able to have them at, as long with the parking. There's only going to, even on Main Street, you know, I go up and down thinking about it. There's only very few that aren't city property that would, that would work, but if, you, you can have them wherever you want. But the, the whole premise was to bring people downtown into the Main Street area. And, yeah, and it, to, for the local businesses.
Okay, I get that.
And not have it, everybody that, in the city can have one anywhere. You don't want to see them at every street corner.
No, you don't want to see them at every street corner. I agree with that. Well, I don't know, it seems like you're limiting people. If they want to sell fruits and vegetable, and they got the land to do it, like Mr. Wilson back there in, in the back. Okay, he, he don't even know that I'm going to say this. At the end of...
Good luck, Mr. Wilson.
Memorial and Carolina, he has a home, and he has a little small biz, a little small building there. And when I was reading this 5 o'clock this morning, not that he's going to do this, but I said, if he did want to do it, that would be a great location, because you got schools on both ends. That would be a great location. So, I'm not quite sure why we would try to, if he decided that's what he wanted to do there, because it's a great location, and he do have parking. Why would we want to limit it? Now, let's go to the corner of Memorial and 17?
You're talking about Mr. Brown's property?
The guys doing watermelon season, and whenever, cantaloupes and whatever, they, they sell very well there.
I agree.
They sell very well there. And why would we want to tell them that they can't do that? If Mr. Brown say, you can, I can charge you so much to sell your fruits and vegetables here, that's a great location to sell. So, I can't understand why we would limit that to Main Street.
That was a P&amp;Z suggestion. I, I couldn't, I have nothing to add to that.
I think their biggest concern, that they just kept, not that I agree or not, but that they kept bringing up was parking issues.
Right.
And if, if you allow it anywhere, and then someone wants to do it, say, in their yard, and they may say, I do have good parking, but if they don't have good parking, then they were talking about, you would have to limit, start getting into the specifics of, well, if you have this much space, then you can only limit it to this many people. And so, they were trying to get out of the logistics of having to police all of that. That's, that's what I got from the conversation.
I, I feel as though if, if they have adequate parking...
Well, that's what they were saying. Who's going to determine if it's adequate? Is it two places per tent? Is it five places per tent? That was the logistics that they were kind of getting bogged down in.
Without having to park on the right-of-way, because I can see, I, I know the location you're talking about with Mr. Wilson's, but put a, put a bunch of tents in there, not a lot of parking, guess where they're going to be parking? They're going to be parking on the right-of-way on Memorial, and they're going to be parking on the right-of-way down South Carolina.
He don't need a tent. There's a building there.
Can't we just say paved parking?
Yeah.
You can.
Have to have paved parking.
You can, yeah, this is a blank template. We, we don't have anything right now, so you can, you can literally mold this to anything you want to mold it into.
They, they went back and forth trying to figure out the proper terminology, and where to limit it, and, and all that kind of stuff. So, they weren't 100% sure. I didn't feel. I mean, honestly, how, how long does it take somebody to go up and make their selection at a farmers' market?
I guess depends on how big it is. I mean, I've seen farmers' markets that are blocks long.
Like, Ms. Taylor was talking about the guy on, that sells watermelons, what, maybe less than five minutes? I just don't know how parking should be such a... I mean, it's no different than a yard sale.
Yeah, it's true.
I would agree. Yeah.
Well, it's no different than the yard sale, but a farmers' market would have a tendency to go on and on, you know, week after week after week.
So, this permit actually lasts for six months, according to what the application says.
Right, so they can have as many as, from what I understand, that they want. Or you can limit it to one a week, you can limit it to one a month. You can say they can have one every day. I mean, it really is up to council what...
I mean, I'm perfectly okay with saying paved parking, but I think that... I mean, I'm perfectly okay with saying paved parking, but I think that it needs to stick to commercial addresses, you know, commercial uses. I don't think that people should have a farmers' market at your house. Otherwise, what's the point of delineating business from residential? It is a business, a farmers' market is a business, period.
Right.
Especially if you're gonna get permits for six months, you know, yard sales one day or two days.
No, I was talking more so about the parking on the side of the road more than anything.
Right, but if you have somebody parking on the side of the road once a year versus, you know, every weekend, you're gonna destroy the side of that road versus...
I don't know, there's a lot of people that have yard sales quite often.
Right. So I mean, I, I would be in favor of commercial property. I mean, you can also just say C, C four and see how it goes, and then if there's a big call in a year, then we revisit it and maybe expand it. I mean, we don't have to do everything all at once. It is easier to continually roll it out more and more than it is to roll it back, I'll say.
And they had mentioned church, they included churches in it just because they said churches have the most parking, so that's why they didn't want to exclude. But churches are not always in commercial.
Right, and I mean, not all churches have good parking, you know?
We also talked about that.
Correct, yeah, that was also.
We talked about churches that were in somebody's house and things like that, so it's why we said approved houses of worship or established houses of worship, but then you've got, again, somebody's gotta police it, you know?
Right.
So if we go with commercial, that exclude churches?
No.
No.
If it's in a commercial zone.
Okay.
Most, I would say most churches are in a commercial zone.
I would say a lot of them are in residential. I mean, if you think about it, I mean...
I guess I'm thinking about downtown.
Yeah, most, the one, yeah, but like even, like I think Florida Avenue Baptist, all of them, those are, well, there's a lot of them that are actually off of Main Street, and, and I, because I approve a lot of the BTRs for the zoning part, and most of them that I see are residential. But yes, there are a bunch on Main Street as well.
Well, like I said, we don't have to do everything all at once. We can start somewhere and see where it goes, so.
Well, Mayor, I like the paved parking opposed to the commercial.
Okay.
Because to me, it's about the same. Most people don't have enough paved parking for people to come and visit anyway. They just have enough for themselves. So that's gonna eliminate some of them, and that's how we eliminate some of them, that we don't have them all set up around the city.
So you think leaving it as is, but just simply adding stipulation of having paved parking?
I, I, I like that one. That way, I wouldn't want to go way up to Main Street, not that Main Street is that far. You know, you go anywhere you want to go and they can park in five minutes.
Right.
But I wouldn't want to go up to Main Street if I got somebody right around the corner from me. I can go right around the corner. Then when I'm up in the area of Main Street, I can stop through there, but I just wouldn't want to limit it just to Main Street.
Okay.
And then as far as paved parking, then how are you gonna delineate how much is enough? We're gonna have to, like, give a square footage or, because I mean, if you have a driveway, you have paved parking. How many people do you have to be able to fit?
You can just say that they have to park on paved parking, and if you catch them parking in the median or whatever, then they get a fine.
There you go.
I can tell you also, there are a lot of churches that have large parking lots, but they're grass. I can tell you, union congregational, most of their parking is grass. You have a few, you have a few strips that go down there, but...
Well, they're overflow parking, I mean...
Right, I don't know where they're...
They, they have a considerable parking facility.
There's also the church on Anoka behind the Olympic, too. It's a Hispanic church. They also have grass. I don't think they have any paved.
Correct, and there's some on North Florida that also are just grass, decent sized grass lots, but strictly grass.
Would you be able to build a church today without having paved parking?
I don't. That's CFRBC question.
Reason, I mean, I don't have your code memorized, but I mean, the reason that they do the grass is so that they don't have to worry about so much of the runoff.
I don't know why they do it. I'm just asking, you know, could you build a building today without having paved parking? I would say you can't.
So we can say religious or paved parking? That, that don't, that doesn't eliminate the churches now. That doesn't have paved parking. We can say religious or paved parking. You can have one or the other.
I would say we spent too much time on this subject already, so let's figure it out and go.
Or religious and, I just, I just think that if we, well, religious is already part of it, because that's what y'all agreed to. That's what y'all said, right?
Right.
So we already know religious is one of them. I think the, the question is the paved parking.
So you want to leave it C four religious and add an additional or paved parking?
Okay. Does anyone oppose to that?
An or paved parking? Or paved parking or?
Or, or paved parking.
What, the whole purpose was to eliminate having it on twenty-seven, so if you say or paved parking, then you're gonna say all of twenty-seven's open now?
Well, that's not, if you want to leave it at C four, oh.
Because right now it's C four or worship or paved parking.
Oh.
Which is pretty much everything.
Right. That kind of opens everything up.
I would say...
Which planning and zoning was concerned about pe, a lot of people turning off of twenty-seven and stuff like that, getting backlogged. That's why they had mentioned not doing it on twenty-seven.
Yeah, I mean, I'd just say C four and places of worship that must have paved parking. And then try it for a year. If you get a whole bunch of people requests for a certain area that, you know, they don't have those things, but it works out well to have it there, then we change it. You can change it at any time. We don't have to.
So would they be able to come before the council and get like a special exemption since they don't have a paved parking? No? No?
Is it that big a deal, guys, really? Geez.
I think you're just gonna have to, yeah.
It hasn't been allowed for how many generations?
I think you're just gonna have to see how it goes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Let's see how it goes.
So C four and churches, and they, and they must have, the C four has to have paved parking?
Yes.
Okay, so the C four has to have paved parking, and then the churches don't?
Right.
Okay. Okay.
Good?
Yeah.
All right. Do we have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions?
Um, I had a question on the, on the days of the week, and I was just, when I was reading it, I was concerned. It say one day during the business week and then the weekend? Did I read that right? Because I'm, I'm concerned about that because if you've got fruits and vegetables and you can only have it one day a week, aren't your vegetables going south bad, spoiling? You can only do it once a week? You got to wait till the weekend?
You could change that.
Well, I think they were trying to delineate between a farmers' market is more like an event, a regular event.
So what you're supposed to do?
Not, not a fruit or vegetable stand.
Okay, so what you...
So if you have a fruit vegetable stand as a business, then you need a business license because that's something that you're doing all the time.
So what are you telling them to do with the, they can do it, I guess you're saying, do whatever you want to do with your fruit and vegetable. You're only gonna be allowed to do it one day a week. Now what happens to your fruits and vegetables? That's on you, pretty much?
Well, if they, I think if they want to have it every day and that's gonna be their whole source of income, then they need to get a business license and do it as a, a business owner.
That's correct. They would have to, if someone's gonna be having a fruits and vegetable stand, that's a different type of business from a farmers' market. A farmers' market is something that's like a festival oriented thing. Typically, it's done by an event. Now, we do have, you know, farmers' markets that are on the outliers of Avon Park, but this is more apt towards the occasional event as opposed to it being a regular business.
And the one that sit on twenty-seven across from Wendy's, that's a business.
That is a business. That's, we have actually in our land development code, a pure outline of what a produce stand is, and that fits the definition of a produce. It's the only place in the city that fits a definition. That's why we're trying to allow the other farmers' markets where they have to have a rigid structure. They have to have bathroom on facilities for a, a fruit stand. Farmers' markets are not gonna be required to do that.
Okay. Understood.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
No.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Benard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right.
Thank you.
I'd like to go back to the previous ordinance.
Oh eight, there's twenty twenty-four?
Two oh two four. A little rusty on promontory law, so the motion to renew can only be used if it failed. And so it's, best one for us to use at this point is a motion to reconsider. There's actually three options, but that motion to reconsider is the best one. The motion to renew that has no, no effect since the, the motion passed, so you can just forget about that.
Okay.
And do a motion to reconsider.
I'll make a motion to reconsider ordinance number oh eight dash twenty twenty-four.
Second.
We have a second. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Benard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And now do the motion to approve the, the ordinance with all the changes that were discussed.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Benard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Jerry. Item number thirteen, thank you, Stephanie. Item number thirteen, this will be a public hearing for the annual rate resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve. Be for the fire assessment. Seventy-four, yeah, seventy-four.
Uh, so more resolution of Avon Park, Florida relating to provision of fire rescue services, facilities, and programs in the city, establishing a rate assessment for fiscal year commencing October first, two thousand twenty-four, imposing fire rescue assessments against assessed property located within the city, approving the assessment role and direct, directing delivery thereof to the tax collector, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Chief, are you gonna be briefing us on this? It's not on. Denise to the rescue.
All right, so we're back again. We do this every year, pick a number to assess. We are at, well, you assess it the first time, preliminary at one eighty-five per house, and all the numbers that are associated with that are in the agenda. You can set it anything you want below that. Last year was one fifty-four. You set it to, like I said, the preliminary rate of one eighty-five. So if you raise it up to the one eighty-five, that would bring in a little over two hundred thousand dollars more.
Okay. Do you remember what the number was that we were discussing in that budget hearing? I think it was a little bit higher than one fifty-four. Was it one? One sixty? That's what you built that, that budget off of? Okay. So the proposed budget was built off of a rate of one sixty? Does anyone want to go outside of that?
No.
No.
Okay. Chief, does that suffice with you?
Yep, if the budget's already there, that's fine with me.
Okay, Melody, you see any issues with that? Okay. So do we have a motion to go with the one hundred and sixty per dwelling unit?
So move. Residential.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
You're approving annual rate resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve at the amount of a hundred and sixty dollars per dwelling unit. The rest of the values will follow suit with that. Is that right, Jim?
Yes, sir.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Benard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, item number fourteen, this will be a public hearing for resolution number twenty twenty-four dash thirteen.
Resolution of the city of Avon Park of Highlands County, Florida, adopting tentative levy of ad valorem taxes for Highlands County for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five, providing for an effective date.
Okay, Melody?
The tentative military is five mils, which is greater than the rollback rate of three point five two one seven by forty-one point nine eight percent. And your budget is based on five mils.
Okay. Does anyone care to make a motion to approve resol?
I, I'm just a little bothered by the, the title. It's adopting a tentative levy of ad valorem taxes for Highlands County for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-five. I, I'm sure I understand what, and everybody understands what that means, but you know, I think just amend that to, to...
Jerry, that's the same format we use every year.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so this is a public hearing. So the public hearing for resolution number twenty twenty-four dash thirteen is now open. Anyone wishing to speak on the proposed mileage rate can now do so. This will be mainly for the audience here. If anyone wishes to speak, seeing no takers. Public hearing for resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirteen is now closed. We will be looking for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the mileage rate at five mils.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? I'll second. Do we have a motion and a second? Any questions? It was very sluggish for a second. There's gotta be a question rolling around.
My only question was, we didn't do a public hearing for the fire assessment one above that, even though it says public hearing.
We did do a tentative, um, oh, I see what you're saying.
We didn't do a public hearing. Okay, we'll, we'll rectify that here in a minute.
So I'm just, I'd like to hear what Jerry had to say about the, the way that the resolution was written. I know we've used the same format for years, but I was curious what your...
I just want to make clear that the, it's for the city of Avon Park, simply because if somebody read that as a, then it might...
So you're saying we should reference Avon Park instead of Highlands County?
I don't think it makes any difference in this, in the context, because it says a resolution of Avon Park.
Okay.
Uh, probably being picky unish, I just threw that up there.
He's being a lawyer, Sheldon. That's what he gets paid to do, all right?
Just curious what his thoughts were.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
Deputy Mayor Benard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, we did not have a public hearing for resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve, so would you like to, us to rescind that motion and then have the public hearing?
Yes.
All right, I'll make a motion to rescind the motion for resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve.
Second.
We have a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Benard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, public hearing for annual rate resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve is now open. Do we need to read it back into the title again, or?
Yeah, let me go ahead and do that just in case.
Okay.
Seventy-four.
Page seventy-four.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Taking me a second to get there. I'm there. Resolution of Avon Park, Florida relating to the provision of fire rescue services, facilities, and programs in the city, establishing a rate of assessment for the fiscal year commencing October first, two thousand twenty-four, imposing fire rescue assessments against assessed property located within the city, approving the assessment role and directing delivery thereof to the tax collector, providing severability and providing for an effective date.
All right, public hearing for resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve before the fire assessment is now open. Anyone wishing to speak on this can now do so. We have a take. Name and address for the record, sir.
Yes, Eric Wilson, four forty Lakeview Drive. Uh, what was the rate before?
I believe it was one fifty-four.
One fifty-four.
Is that what we were paying before?
Yes.
And you want to take it up to one sixty?
Correct, yep.
Oh, okay.
All right, any other questions for the public hearing? Seeing none, public hearing for rate resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve is now closed. Do we have a motion to approve at one sixty?
So move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Benard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number fifteen, be a public hearing for resolution twenty twenty-four dash fourteen.
Resolution of the city of Avon Park of Highlands County, Florida, adopting tentative budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-five, providing for an effective date.
Okay. So the public hearing for resolution twenty twenty-four dash fourteen setting tentative budget is now open. Anyone wishing to speak on this can now do so. Seeing no flood of individuals to speak, public hearing is now closed. Be looking for a motion.
Make a motion to approve...
Make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty four dash fourteen as is, please.
Alright, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, item number sixteen, this will be the purchase of Pierce Enforcer Ascendant Aerial Tower under Sourcewell contract one one three zero two one, chief?
Yeah, this is just to, uh, bring you back up to speed, I did that presentation in a budget workshop, uh, at that point, you had tentatively agreed to buy it, but it couldn't be officially until you had it in this meeting, so this is in the budget, up to you guys to final approval or not.
Okay. This is for the tower truck that would allow us to go up to, was it four or five stories?
Hundred feet, depends, yeah, depends where, you know, cars and everything kind of factor into that, how far it can actually reach.
Safely, anything that exists downtown right now.
How many stories?
A hundred feet.
Well, it depends, it depends on where you park it, like City Hall, we have a seventy-five foot ladder right now that can barely reach the roof of the second floor on City Hall, so it depends offset, you know, cars in the way, all that kinda stuff. So, it goes a hundred feet in the air, but if you're parked forty feet off the road, that hundred feet is down to like forty feet in the air.
Okay, any questions? Seeing none, we'll be looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve D sixteen for the purchase of a Pierce Enforcer Ascendant Aerial Tower.
Okay. We have a motion, do we have a second?
I second it.
We have a motion and a second, last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number seventeen, this will be for concrete pad at the Avon Park Housing Authority, Mr. Atkinson.
Jason Atkinson, Paul the Works Director, so this came up, uh, this was kinda within, uh, spending authority for, for the manager, but I just wanted to run it by you, um, for the bulk and yard waste pickup locations, largely bulk wastes, not so much the yard waste, uh, we'd wanna put a pad and just locate that, and right now, the, the only area that I really saw was, um, in the Ridgedale Apartments, where they're currently putting all their bulk waste right in the middle, it's a real, it's an eyesore. So just wanna put something to, it's the north side of that property, and do a concrete pad and just kinda do two sides, so if you're just driving down that middle road, you can't really see it, but, uh, when our, uh, bulk truck goes over there, grapple truck goes and picks it up, they can just have a, a location that's designated, and it's just a better look. So it's kinda like enclosing in the dumpster, it's the same type of setups, except for it's only gonna be enclosed on two sides, that way they don't have to worry about getting in the corners, the truck can just kinda get a good grab, but without making holes in the ground, so. That, I, I'm expecting, uh, with, with fence and everything, probably in the four thousand range, I'm guessing, but I just put not to exceed six, but my guess is like four thousand. So if we see an area that we wanna to do that, I, I don't foresee doing that in duplexes or single helms, because I can identify where it's coming from, and it's kinda piggybacks on the conversation we had before about the multifamily housing, not, um, single family houses in a community, so we can, we can do that, and we can assign whose it is, but in, in this situation, we really don't know who, but since they operate under us in a way that we would just put it off, and I think it'd be a good look for, for the community.
Jerry, any issue?
No.
Okay, alright, any questions on this?
Yeah, I have a question, um, the pricing, you said the pricing will need to be obtained for fencing, um, so does that mean that city personnel will be erecting that fence?
No, I'd probably, I'd get one of the co- fencing contractors we usually use, it'd be minimal, I don't wanna say which one, but with one of the ones that we usually use, could be pretty, might be fifteen hundred, two thousand, somewhere around there.
Okay.
I have a question, Jason, why is it that Avon Park Housing Authority won't do that themselves, why, why is it that they won't spend their money? Why we got to spend the residents of Avon Park's money to do that?
That's why, that's why I brought it kinda in, in front of the council to see if that's their desire, they haven't done it, it's just, it's an eyesore, and I was invited to a meeting by, uh, Councilwoman McCur, and I, I said, you know, they, this was something proposed, uh, they thought it was good, but we can just tell them to do it or not do it, and just keep it right there where it looks really bad.
Well, Jason, I agree, it looks bad, it's been looking like that for years, okay, here's my thing with that pile. And for anybody out there, we're talking about Ridgedale, they, they call that housing development over there Ridgedale, and so with that being said, I sometimes wonder if it's, um, the, the residents that's doing all that dumping, I don't believe there's that much furniture inside of those apartments that ev- every day you go by there, uh, even after the truck has come by and picked up, you know, you got another pile there and another pile there, and we can say the same thing for Memorial. So I say this to say, why is it that we have to use the Avon Park residents' money to do that, why is the Avon Park Housing Authority, if they care about their property, and they should, they should be, why, why is it that they won't spend their money to get it done, why didn't you go to them and, and pitch that to them that I would love for y'all to get involved and see if we can build this, instead of coming to the city and asking the city to do it, use the city money instead of using their money? Because after all, you are helping them, I get it. We, we're the people that picks up the trash, but, but that's their property over there, why can't they take care of their own property?
We don't have to, it's a, it's a, it's an offer to, to have a discussion, that's why it's a discussion amongst the council, to see what the council thinks, it's, we do have, I believe we have, uh, I don't know if it's appointed staff, uh, or members that are on the, the board, but there is an interest from the council there, so it's just a, what do y'all think? Do you, is that something you would like to do? Uh, yes, it's theirs, and I looked at it and I was wondering, like, how much, how much skin in the game do we have here? Is it something that we think, hey, you know what, this is something nice we can do, make it cost us three thousand, we don't have to worry about it anymore, or do we just wanna leave it there, because probably if you, if you put it up to them, they may just leave it there, I just think it's an eyesore, something we can do, kick it around amongst the council, and I think, uh, come up with a good solution, maybe, yes or no, it's just, it's an offer.
So Jason, let me make sure I understand the concept of what you're trying to do, you trying to build a concrete pad and put a fence around it?
I would put, let's just say if, if you're looking at it, you're looking at it from the, the driver looks at it from the road, they pull up to it, it's gonna be on each side where they're looking at, and when they get in the truck, they'll be able to grab, but if you're driving up the road, you're gonna see a, a fence, and it's gonna be shielded, but where they're picking up, when you get directly in front of it, it'll just be an area where they can pick up, it's a designated location for them to do it, without screening it a little bit, so it doesn't look so bad, and that you won't really see it too much unless you're kinda in front of it, that's the reason.
So, okay, so in order for them to put a sofa inside of that area, it's gonna be a gate where they can head me out?
It's just two, just two, two sides, it's, yeah, it's not gonna be three sides, I don't wanna put three sides, because then when the truck tries to pick it up, if he hits it, you know, it's, they're, they're really good at what they do, so if they, if they can grab it, they can easily grab it from the street, but it will be shielded as you're coming up, so it, you'll just see it if you're directly in front of it. Right now, it's just, it's a three sixty view, everyone can see how bad it looks, I, I think you guys seen the pictures, it's in the, in the council packet, so it's an offer, you discuss and tell me what you think.
I want it cleaned up, of course I do, I want it to look good, I just don't understand why we have to pay for it.
Have you ever asked the Avon Park Housing Authority if they would do that?
Well, I'm their liaison, and I know that they have put a lot of money into getting their facilities, um, their properties, different properties cleaned with the yard, uh, the, um, landscaping and the lawn care, so, uh, I mean, we could, we could check with them, I could check with them and see, and maybe if they can't afford the whole thing, maybe it would be like a negotiation to do half, maybe we could help them with half of it, or maybe they could buy the fence and we could do the pad.
I think they should monitor, monitor that area more, because I don't think the people, all the people that live in that area is doing the dumping, I think the dumping is coming from everywhere, everybody knows that it's a dumping site, and that's what they're doing. And I think Ridgedale, uh, a housing authority should take a stance and do more than what they're doing, that pile been there forever. It's just been there forever, and they don't, they don't, they act like they don't even care about it, and now we bring it to us and want us to pay for it.
It sounds like you're telling me that you would like to call them and express your feelings to the housing authority.
Yes, I would.
I think that would be a good thing.
I can also, at the next meeting, I can bring it up and, and tell them that, you know, we're interested to see if maybe they can absorb the cost instead of the city absorbing the cost.
I think we should officially ask them to do it, under their own fruition, without any other explanation, just ask them to do it, see if they do it, if they do it, great, if they don't, then we'll revisit this.
Yep, and I, I feel, uh, to that, to the, the statement that you made, uh, Councilwoman Taylor, it's, I, I believe they take some of their debris from other areas, and then take it over there, and, um, you know, because it's kinda like a easy pickup spot. I, I think that's what I heard in the past, I heard something along those lines, but, yeah. Take the direction of the council.
Well, I would anticipate that there are professionals there that will understand that this will be looked at further in the future, and they will probably do something about it, hopefully. So I guess we'll table it for now, is that what I'm hearing?
That's fine, yes.
Okay, no motion to be made right now?
Postpone.
Motion to postpone?
Second.
We have a second, any questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Yes, sir, Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Alright, at this time, we will have a closed meeting. So we will have to ask, this will be a closed executive session. It will commence with a statement from myself, once the room has been cleared, so. Alright, moving on to item number eighteen, this will be the city manager's report.
I just wanted to basically say, everything that was done in closed session stays confidential.
I'm sorry, Mr. Burrow, I missed that.
It's, uh, everything that took place during the closed meeting is, remains confidential to the conclusion of the case.
Alright, item number eighteen, city manager, regular update.
Real quick, the bid opening for RFP twenty-four dash twelve, which was the sale and development of city-owned property, and RFP twenty-four dash thirteen for the classic Palladiums roof replacement occurred last week, both bids will be on the September twenty-third agenda for approval. Uh, FAA update, as yet, uh, we've not received the record of decision, we are still holding and are planning, um, to have it for the September twenty-third agenda, which is the assignment and assumption agreement, so finger crossed, that goes through. Grant updates, the city applied for the, uh, Community Planning Technical Assistance Grant in June of twenty-three. Unfortunately, the city was not awarded the grant funding, a reason was not given as to why, uh, but we were encouraged to try again. Project updates, we have received the Certificate of Completion for the Public Works Roof Replacement, we've also received the final inspection report for the shuffleboard court roofs. Copies are available to anyone who'd like to see them. And, uh, final update, I received my CMC, which is the Certified Municipal Clerk designation from the Institute of Municipal Clerks.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And that concludes my updates.
I have a question, the, um, the text, remember a few meetings ago, we had the, uh, text where they would send out notifications for things, have we done it?
That should be on for September twenty-third, I've been working on the contract, hopefully, I sent it to Jerry today, hopefully it looks good, and we can put it before you, yeah, I sent it to you today.
Okay, well that concludes our regular agenda, we do have a few signups, first up is Jason Harris. There are Jason Harris here. Got no Jason Harris. Next up is Beverly Ruck, we have a Beverly Ruck. Even though it says it here, if you will, just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Beverly Ruck, my address is sixty-three hundred East Arbuckle Road, Avon Park.
Yes, ma'am, you have five minutes.
Okay, uh, so to begin with, this was Jane Benham's presentation at the last meeting on August twenty-sixth. I was really pretty appalled that she would bring this to the city council, and, uh, so I just wanna go over a couple things, and then I will move on.
Okay.
I read or listened to Jane's presentation four or five times, her tone and verbiage was rather disturbing. She talks about people having high school mentality, who is the one that ran to the principal's office, or the city council meeting in this case, with color-coded folders. Total immaturity, definitely promoting more friction than improvement, these kind of actions are not helping Avon Park. I kinda call it stirring the soup. I assume she made a folder for me, and that's okay, because I've got a folder here, in case any city council member would like to see it. These are things on Jane, and I know this is pretty petty, because it shouldn't have even been brought here, but it needs to be addressed. Okay, I do believe that many of the color-coded folders Jane made are business owners and entrepreneurs in downtown Avon Park. They have thriving businesses and are working toward making Avon Park a better place, many of them are associated with the Avon Park Business Alliance. The alliance was formed because there was lack of inclusiveness from another entity of downtown Avon Park, which Jane is involved in. So I'm gonna ask Jane to please stop, enough is enough. So the mission for everyone should be to try to make Avon Park a better place, there is work to be done, I think the citizens are ready for change. More people are ready to step up and make Avon Park harmonious. Okay, so on another note, I just wanna give you my opinion, I have reviewed the resumes from the two applicants for the position of city manager. I know there's a meeting coming up Saturday the fourteenth to discuss the two applicants. Out of the two, I would definitely choose David Lynch, he has experience with being a city manager, he is someone who has held that position, and he is from far away. We need new blood, someone that is not coming here with a perceived idea about how things are done. I do think that some board members might be intimidated by his experience, if he's not the right choice, I would say, put it back out there, hire the right person for the job. Just my opinion, but I think a lot of people would agree with me. So in closing, my focus forward is going to be helping to make the city of Avon Park a place where people wanna come and enjoy the city of charm. Let's make twenty twenty-five a new look and a great reputation for Avon Park, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is Dolores Miranda. Hopefully I read that right. Please give your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Dolores Miranda, address forty fifty-one East Alboming Range Road. So, uh, I've done a lot of records requests with Chrissy, and initially, I was actually gonna come here and talk in great detail about Sean Holliday's termination. But instead, I'm gonna talk about an obvious abuse of power, HR and City Hall issues, and lastly, accountability to the citizens of Avon Park. Deputy Mayor, please explain why you participated in the investigation of Sean Holliday. Even if you had the authority to investigate, and you don't.
Can you pull that microphone towards your mouth a little bit?
How's that, do you, you want me to back up and say anything again?
I just wanna make sure the rest of it gets there.
Okay. Even if you had the authority to investigate, and you don't, stating in a council meeting that you only spoke to people you thought you could trust lends credence to a sloppy, rushed investigation driven by an agenda and not facts. Deputy Mayor, by investigating a city employee, you are in violation of section two point oh six of the city charter, and therefore subject to voter recall. So while putting together the details of the timeline of Sean's termination, the lack of competency and or complicity revealed by the interim city manager in HR was alarming. So many things did not comply with- So many things did not comply with HR best practices. The disingenuous statement recently given to the print media explaining the extension of Sean Holliday's probation was disturbing. Certainly, a casual observer would have believed the explanation given, maybe. However, those of us who understand the timeline know differently. Once again, actions taken by City Hall lend credence to a sloppy, agenda-driven investigation. The incoming city manager has a mess to clean up, if the council will allow it. I'm sure I only saw the tip of the iceberg, and that's really scary. I would urge the incoming city manager to restrict communication between City Hall and City Council to information that is needed to conduct city council business only. I would strongly recommend searching for an HR director with certifications and experience who demonstrate competence and best practices in ethical behavior. Speaking of ethics, after watching hours of meetings, hours, and it was ugly, y'all, it was ugly. I am convinced the Avon Park City Council needs a written and adopted code of ethics. The disrespect, bullying, name-calling I witnessed is not acceptable. Speakers that come before this council are required to act with decorum. The mayor especially, and council members should be expected to do the same. A code of ethics is needed to establish what is acceptable regarding personal gain and conflicts of interest. Simply abstaining from a vote does not sufficiently address ethical obligations. Furthermore, what is legal and what is ethical is not the same. Avon Park needs to construct those ethical boundaries and hold the city council accountable. A code of ethics is needed to ensure that council and board members have only one interest, and that's the city of Avon Park. And I have no confidence, and I am not the only one, that the majority of the council members before me right now can honestly say the city of Avon Park is their only interest. I urge council to place this matter on the agenda and begin creating and adopting a code of ethics to establish a baseline of accountability to the citizens and employees of Avon Park. The last six months of the city of charm politics have been anything but, and the next three will likely be as bad. So now we wait for the Florida Ethics Commission to conclude its investigation into the mayor and the brick building, and then determine if there's enough support to begin a voter recall on the deputy mayor, and I'm thinking there will be. The takeaway is this, please listen carefully. Status quo is no longer acceptable. The city hall has got to clean up their act. Thank you.
All righty. Anything else for the good of the city? Seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned.